Okay, I'll call the meeting of the ordinance committee to order December fourteenth, twenty sixteen, six P M. It looks like we haven't had any new minutes, so we don't need to approve any minutes. Appears that nobody is here for public speak time. A little bit of a shocker.
I don't know about public.
No, you are in public.
Oh, well.
You just have a role.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah.
We all have roles.
We all have roles, yes. And so, you know, basically, we have a couple of new things on our agenda, but I was hoping that we could start with the draft.
The draft.
Of the food truck ordinance.
Oh, good, let's look at it.
Which basically reflects the changes that we had discussed when Jackie Duda, the public health agent, the health agent, came in and gave us some advice. One of the things was, you know, including the wordage "mobile food vendor." And I also left food truck as well, so we covered all our bases. You will see that basically what it basically does what exactly what we said was requires them to be licensed through the city clerk. Yep, we just started.
Welcome to the table.
And then what we did was we outlined specific things we thought would be important for the clerk to have, like the name, permanent address, phone, email, emergency contact of the applicant, identifying what they're selling, where they're gonna be selling it, et cetera. And then we then saying that they would have to get approval from the health agent to, which is what they do already. Now, you will, I did take a little bit of, I gave myself a little leeway here, because we had not determined what the fee would be. Current fee in the books is two hundred dollars. At that, my feeling is that that's too much, and that's why nobody's been doing it. Because this has been on the books since we've been getting mobile food vendors, and not one person has come and paid that fee. So, I think, so what I did was I said, it would be ten dollars a day if you wanted to do a special permit, and it would be a hundred dollars for the year. Because I thought a hundred dollars, you know, if you're selling popsicles on a rolling bicycle cart, a lot more than a hundred dollars might be a little much to ask to sell, you know, or if you're selling cupcakes on the back of a scooter. You know, so and I know that that was something we had discussed, this is, again, this is a draft.
Right.
We can, we can discuss that further, I just wanted to, felt like putting something there made sense to me. I did, we did restrict different areas where the mobile food vendors could go, and we added some restrictions. So you can see, if you look under section five dash four one, you wanna see, you wanna take a look?
Can you help us?
It'd be nice to have a copy to look at.
Yeah, yeah. So under five dash four one, C, so no mobile vendor operating on a sidewalk.
Okay, got it, alright, yep.
Shall impede or impair pedestrian traffic, so that would be someone who is on, has a pushcart. That would be someone who's on a bicycle that has like a cooler on it, like, you know, that's selling popsicles or whatnot. And I have seen a bicycle cupcake.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, no mobile vendor should conduct business on a public way unless it has been closed for a special event. No mobile vendor shall commence or conduct business on any city-owned property, and this is where I put an exclusion, excluding public parking, unless it has been previously, previously authorized in writing by the mayor. So then that is where C one comes in, so mobile food vendors in public parking spots. They must meet the following criteria: spaces approved, food truck, mobile vendor parking spot, and it says "see the table," which I included. Parking in the space is not obstruct traffic or cause dangerous blind spot for drivers or pedestrians. Parking the spot for more than five hours without permission from the mayor's office or as part of a special event that has prior city approval. So that would be like, you can't just park your food truck overnight and leave it there for, you know, days on end. You'd have to actually abide by five hour, so if, let's say, food truck pulled up at, you know, five o'clock, they would have to leave by ten o'clock. So, and then, parking in no parking zone, sidewalks in front of fire hydrants, parking in a manner that is hazardous, that is a hazard, is prohibited. Parking in the mill parking lots behind the mills is permitted, however, they must park in designated spots. Exception, a special event that is approved by mill owner where a section of the parking lot is closed for events. So that would cover food truck Friday where they cordon off half the parking lot and have the food trucks line up, so that would allow for that exemption there. And then this is the part that we kinda worked on, we hadn't really come up with any language for, but this is the areas that approve for mobile food vendors for parking. So downtown, the first parking spot in front of the Pond Promenade, which is right there, which is only one spot, so if it's not available, it's not available. Spaces in the fifty Payson Municipal Lot, so I figured, you know, if we have like, if it's after operating hours and a food truck can't park there, and they could pull over here and they wanted to try it, it would, seems like it would make sense to, and that's the only downtown areas that we had talked about. So, you know, that's something we can discuss further, do we wanna open it up any, to any other spots? I couldn't think of any off the top of my head that weren't in close proximity to food. You know, and I don't know if we need to be putting, you know, approving parking spaces for food trucks in front of restaurants, that doesn't seem like it's very equitable. So, so and then the mill industrial, the first, and I don't, we're gonna have to work on this morning, because I couldn't figure out how to say it, because they don't have an address. The first three spaces directly in front of the back entrance of the Mill one eighty building, area with the smokestack, New City Brewery. But, you know, the only problem with that is if New City Brewery doesn't exist in ten years, then, you know, we, I mean, granted, we could go in and change it pretty quickly, but.
We can figure that out.
In the rear of the, of one eighty Pleasant Street. And then the other section where I thought it made sense were the spaces directly in front of the back entrance of one forty-two Pleasant Street, which is a abandoned building. So that designates two catch areas, which is the only two areas where food trucks are going right now anyway.
How do you think other folks might feel about having food trucks in Eastworks perhaps?
We can, we can ask, you know, I'm fine with it, I mean, that's such a huge parking lot, we could, we could approve spots in front of.
If they wanted to have an event and have food trucks, then maybe.
Well, but remember, but remember.
Maybe they prefer not.
In the mills, if they're having an event, they can have food trucks there anyway. That's stipulated under.
Special event approved by mill owner.
Yep.
Mill property.
Yep.
Mill owner property, probably should say property.
Property. I did share this with you, so you can actually make that, you can make the change on your computer.
I just couldn't settle into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you, did you get my email back?
I don't know.
It, yeah, it came through about five thirty-five.
Yeah, 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 oh yeah, I did. Request for access, yep.
Yeah.
Got it.
Granted.
I will grant it.
Do my own.
Okay. Okay, I think that, I think that does it. Yep, you now have editing access. And really, the only other change we made was that the mayor, the city clerk, the health inspector, or the chief of police may revoke the license. Before it was like the mayor and the chief of the police. We thought that if the city clerk is issuing, and, you know, the mayor's not available, then that could potentially be, you know, if there was an issue, that could be another, you know.
So, the mayor, the city clerk, the health inspector, or the chief of the police.
Yep. What do you think about that, Karen? Does that make sense to you?
Sure.
It would just be revoking the license.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna ask a question.
Go for it.
You wanna make sure you were.
I'm ready.
It sounded like you were almost at.
That's the end, that is the end.
Just a quick question for the mayor, page, page one, section five four one, I think it's page three.
Five four one?
Three, C, C, on the top, on the top. Parking in the spot for more than five hours without permission from the mayor's office or as part of a special event, whether it's prior city approval, in writing? They, that is something that you, somebody could write out, hand to them, and then if the police happen to say, geez, what are you guys doing here, and then, you know, oh, here it is, you don't sound very well.
I, I forgot the voice thing going on. I don't, like, if somebody wants to use the parking lot, in my opinion, it's for like car washes, there's four municipal clerks, and they come, they apply, and then Barbara checks off to make sure it's available, and then sends it to me with her thing, yes, it's good to go, I approve it, it goes back there.
Goes back to.
So.
So that's that, that's written approval.
So that would probably.
In writing.
Yeah.
Is there a purpose in talking about?
And then, what I'm thinking is that it could go back to the person who's there for a special event.
Yep, because they.
Here's my, if anyone tried to enforce it, then they could have it right here.
Yep.
The one parking space, certainly, I, we've talked about that a lot, and that certainly makes a lot of sense, I think.
I, we haven't had, I mean, so far.
And this space here makes a lot of sense.
So far, we haven't had any interest, other than the food truck that goes on private property at Whiskers.
On private property.
So. No, that space.
Yeah, I'm.
I know.
I think, I think it will.
Well, maybe, when we put it in, when we put it in, people might, and it might be, you know, my only concern with that is like, say, you know, someone's like on a Friday night, they really wanna set up their food truck there, you know, who's to say that space isn't gonna be taken?
It's gonna be taken by a vehicle.
Right. So, you know, so how do we.
What's going on?
Right, so how do we manage that, is there a way to manage that?
We either put up a sign, reserves for food truck, for preference to food trucks, or we have no.
Or, if it's, if it's available, it's available, if not, you come to the parking lot.
I, I hate to, yeah, I think, I think it is, I think that's the way to handle it.
Yeah.
Because let's say, let's say you put up a sign, preference to the food trucks, well, that food truck's not here, I'm gonna park here, and then I go do something else.
And then the food truck comes, and what, you tow that person?
An hour later, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. I think, I think it is just, you know, that's just one of the areas, that's the parking spot that we have identified as making sense for downtown. And we haven't had a lot of interest yet anyway, so not necessarily, I think, if there was gonna be interest, it would be in that spot, so. So, and you know what, it would be, I think, I did send this to Tamara too, so we'll have her take another look at it, but I feel like we're getting closer.
I think we're getting much closer.
Yeah, and I do.
I appreciate that, that you're putting it together my.
Yeah, no problem, I do wanna just, you know, get that language for the specific areas at the mills. I think I'm gonna invite probably Mike Michon and Will Bundy to, just to take a look at that, just to see what they think. I know Mike Michon had expressed some concerns, I haven't heard anything from him since, that was like three months ago.
One eighty?
Yeah, one eighty. But there's, there's food trucks out there, like, at least three days a week, and there haven't been any problems, so. Yeah, no, so I think that that's, that's gonna be okay.
The fee may be something.
We can go back to that, yeah. I mean, I put, you know, the reason why I put a hundred was because it was in line with what, like, say you have, decided to make a counterfeit license for the city, we have to sell food here, it's a hundred dollar fine. You know, and if you, if you violate any of the provisions, it's a hundred dollar fine, I was like, well, you know what, maybe just a hundred dollar fine, make them, you know.
Just pay the hundred dollars upfront.
Pay it upfront, and you don't have to pay a hundred dollar fine. So, and, and I also didn't wanna price people out, because it would be hard to have a sliding scale fee structure, you know, for, if you're trying to do like a small kind of mobile thing with maybe you converted your kid's bob trailer that you towed behind your bike to be a mobile slushy stand, you know, like, who knows? And, you know, do we wanna price people out for being entrepreneurs? Because, like, I mean, if, you know, if you're selling popsicles, you have to sell a coat of few popsicles.
On one level, I, I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
And on another level, I see the commercial activity of somebody who would might come here three or four days a week. Once, we have boats on the pond.
Yep.
And.
They can make a.
And, and you could be making hundreds of dollars a day, maybe, maybe a thousand dollars a day.
Right.
I don't know what the margin is here. And to say for a hundred bucks, you could, you could, you could be there all summer long. Seems a little light.
Well, that's also one thing I didn't put in there, was a limit. Why, because we had talked about putting a limit of ten licenses, I did not put that in, because I thought that maybe we, come on, discuss that in one piece a little bit further.
What were you thinking, what were you thinking about, about limiting numbers?
So, you know, I, I don't remember where it came up, I think.
Ten food trucks running a lot, running around, it might be a.
Yeah, that might be a lot, you know, or twenty food trucks running around, that might be a lot. But I'm, I think that was something Jackie had said, and I wrote it down.
We should be so lucky to have.
That's what I said.
Twenty food trucks would want it.
Exactly, yeah. For Hill, private property. So they can have as many food trucks on their property as they would like. If it's on their property, so it's like brass cap, if they can have. Right.
It's perfect.
Yep, so anything that's private property, we don't, that's not covered, this is public, basically public, public. I mean, other than the ones that are on private property would have to be licensed, but that's it. So they would have to, but they would, they would have to be approved by Jackie and.
And the health department anyways.
Right, exactly, and so the only thing that we're really regulating is public spaces. Exactly, because we don't wanna align food trucks, like in Washington DC, you know, like, taking, going up the block. Oh, just missed our food truck discussion, very exciting, we're very close.
Oh, jeez.
So, so what we can do is, I think, you know, at your leisure, read it over, hopefully Tamara will be able to review it, and then we can, you know, hopefully, by our next meeting, we can be ready to put, move this forward. So I think that would be really good. Okay, so since Tamara's not here, I think we'll, do you have any other questions on the food truck? Any other thoughts? So, since Tamara's not here, I think we can move on to the Human, Human Rights Ordinance Committee discussion. I'm glad you're here, Joe, because maybe you can shed a little bit of light into this, because all, the only information I have is from the email.
Yeah, I think the discussion came up, I just wasn't sure, so a while back now, if committees were formed by the mayor, or was there a city council perspect, approach, and I guess Jack answered that.
Said it's both.
Yes, they're both. But I know in his little mention, he raised concerns about some of the pros and cons of.
Like, open meeting potential.
Exactly, yeah, right, I mean, that, my, the discussion is open, I, I'm, I am in favor of the spirit, but I'm kind of against the commission.
Okay.
For a couple reasons, first of all, to me, the correct, the correct approach would be go to the police. If you have a hate crime, if you have something that you feel is a human rights violation, I think you should go to the police, because they can do something about it. And at the same point, your privacy is protected, which we can't do under a public meeting. And also the risk of saying, this person said this about me, and if that person was wrong, then is to say they're liable for saying publicly, this is what this person said about me, I just, I don't see the need. I think I had mentioned briefly to the mayor that maybe I think what would be a nice compromise, but just a point, a human rights liaison officer, someone, if, in this time, if people are concerned about it, if there is a particular officer, people could feel, okay, I'm gonna call Officer Smith, because he is that person. That, that, that I think would be.
Okay, yeah.
So, just follow up on what Joe said. We, we had discussions with the chief on that too, and what we thought, like, technically, in current things, we have, basically, we have detectives, and like, anytime this would happen, go right to them.
Right.
But we thought, it might be, I mean, it happens anyway, but it might be helpful if people felt that there would be, again, a liaison, like, one of the straight could be, could be to as, the liaison, the contact person for that particular, you know, issue. So, it just helps have a name versus just call. You know, we've done like liaisons now, the government agent, you know, just, again, more, more community policing, expression of the police department, but also a name for the public instead of just calling. Even though that's how it's happening now, we thought it might, that might help. And, and I think some of the concerns that Joe had mentioned too, is about their adjudicating, adjudicating problems.
Right, they wouldn't have any.
Right, so, you, you, you know what I mean?
Right, so you'd be able to, you'd be able to listen, but you wouldn't have the power necessarily to be able to do anything.
So, what Joe and I were a little concerned about would be like, you're basically slowing the process down instead of going more direct, like, our goal is always to streamline things. So, if you're waiting to go to a commission committee, basically slows it down instead of going right to where you want to go.
Right, okay.
Right, Joe?
Interesting.
If I could throw something in there.
Absolutely.
I, I think there might also be a hierarchic, fear or hesitation on somebody who's been a victim of a hate crime to come forward if they know that it's gonna be made into public, public, um, and be put on TV, you know, in the, in the form of a committee hearing, or become part of a public record. I don't, I don't see what good that, that would accomplish.
Sure.
Exactly, we're really, we're really cautious about the privacy.
So my only, so I have a couple thoughts on this, you know, I think my first initial thought is, you know, what are other communities doing in regards to this? Because I feel like I, maybe Greenfield has something, and maybe Northampton as well. They had to change it, okay.
Because they had to basically.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't, I'm sorry. I can't hear you, I'm sure the public can hear you.
I sounded a little earlier.
I'm so sorry.
My voice is coming back to me.
No, 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 no.
So I know, I know, Northampton had to change the way, there's just originally.
Okay.
They had to change, my authority takes, you know, takes some changes.
Right.
Because of.
Sure.
Yep, we were afraid.
So, and so, and so that was one of my thoughts, is I wanted to kind of have an idea of what other communities were doing, how they approached it, so just to, just for my own information, which, you know, I think is still worth, worthy of investigation, my other thought was, you know, for incidents that maybe just need the light of day kind of shed on them, that aren't necessarily hate crimes, or maybe on, or on the border, on the cusp, you know, how, and I'll give you, I'll give you a concrete example, you know, I have one of my son's close friends, one of my basketball players, was sitting in front of the high school, and a parent drove up in his truck and yelled out to him and said, hey, what are you gonna do when Trump wins and you get deported? Because he's Puerto Rican. And this is a seventeen-year-old child, and he goes, don't worry, you know, when you get, when you're behind the wall, I'll go and throw popcorn over to you and your mom. And this was something he said in broad daylight, in front of people at the high school. But, you know, do you really need to call a detective for that? You know, but. Right, yeah, and so, oh no, I did, oh, I called the principal and the superintendent, and I was, I'm just not gonna slide in my, that doesn't happen. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think anything happened.
Oh, I'm sure, oh, I'm sure they met.
No, I mean, I think they, they talked to him. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, he should have been dragged in front of a, you know, a whatever, restraining order, you know, like, you're not allowed on school property anymore. That's, that would have been my solution, but, you know, like, how do you air some of those things that are kind of border on just people being inappropriate, but still are like infringing on this, you know, this child's rights to his education and not being harassed at his school? You know, how does that, how do we shed light on that in a way that is gonna, you know, help enlighten East Hampton? And I worry that if we just say, well, we're just gonna have the police involved, that, and that's, that's how we're gonna deal with it, that, but I agree, like, I don't necessarily think that you need to, you know, if there are issues, and this goes back to me investigating a little bit more, like, what does this mean? What are other communities doing with it? Because I don't want anybody to have to come in, have a film, be public meeting law, and have all that. And then Joe's perfectly right, like, what if someone accuses someone of doing something they didn't do? You know, and then is it, you know, is it libel, or, you know, or slander, or, you know.
But even that scenario you just said.
Right.
You know, it's like, what would that commission do?
Right.
You know, they should go to the authority, whether it be the school or the police.
True.
And, and even though, like, the schools, they have strict policies, strict policies in line, where obviously with the adult, whatever, but the child.
Yeah, yeah.
So they would have had.
Yeah, yeah, no, the counselors talked to them, and they called in all the kids that witnessed it, and.
Don't forget, they also have a resource officer to lead.
Right.
So, so we have two, so, you know, like, there are channels in place.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I, I just want, you know, I just, I don't know, I guess I'm erring on the side of like, proactiveness, and, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that I think that this is something that we necessarily have to do, I'm just saying that I feel like I wanna make sure that we vet it properly to, to make sure that we're not missing out on an opportunity to do something that could benefit.
So, if such a commission could let the public know that something like that happened.
Right.
What could they have done?
Oh my god, that was the first that I've heard of that.
Right.
And I'm going, oh my god, that happened in East Hampton.
Yeah.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
Where, you know, maybe there's something where a commission would be, you know, their, their entire task is to make the public aware that these things are happening.
To shed light on them.
To shed light.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was thinking, and, you know, and I didn't know, I mean, because then there was like the whole Confederate flag issue, and, you know, I know that there was, you know, there's always two sides to these things, but.
But I think God was lost or replaced.
Right.
You know what I mean, like, back to Joe, what would they have done?
Yeah, I mean, the role I see, and there are other communities that, I mean, other organizations that already do it, would be education, would be like, I think as Tamara has talked about, how do you handle conflict?
Right.
How do you do those things? That would be, I think, the only, I, I think legitimate role, role for an organization like that, we have East Hampton Matters that sometimes gets involved and does those things.
Right.
And that stuff is really important, you know, how you, you know, conflict, I'm sure there are hundreds of other things, that thing, but, but, you know, the question would be, it is probably human nature to get involved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the biggest risk, of people getting involved in places that it is not their purgative, to be able to say, it's the police's.
Yeah, and I think, I think you just, you just gave me a bit of an epiphany. And I agree, I mean, I think that the role of something like this would have to be purely advisory and more of like, what do we do as a community? You know, this is, this is an offshoot of the city, what do we do as a community to educate our citizens in the importance of the richness of diversity, or whatever, you know, and have like, them maybe examine, you know, what's happening in the country and suggest particular ordinances, or suggest different initiatives, or, you know, like, just a purely advisory, not like, come tell us your problems.
Right.
Come, come tell us all your issues.
Right.
But, because they can't solve them.
Right.
And I don't know if, if that's something that we necessarily need at this moment, but, I mean, that's, I guess where the discussion is going.
JP, what are your thoughts, because you're obviously our co-sponsor of it, so what are your thoughts?
I'm thinking of, with all the distress that everyone's feeling, more recently in the last several months, maybe like six or seven months, I don't know, as we listen to a society that is listening to the president who is speaking in ways I've never heard a public figure speak before, makes it feel like this is the norm, and this is okay. I'm not sure that it is okay to, in my opinion, disrespect other people in a way that I've seen disrespect at the national level. So, in our society, if we can help in some way to allow people to come together and discuss how they feel about whatever distress they may be experiencing locally, then it can be helpful. It can be, I don't know if cathartic is the right word, but a way of sharing experience. but a way of sharing experiences, bonding together, joining, and also listening to each other. Because if we take the example of the flag, that where we had, it came up in, we're in the council meeting, we had discussions, the public was there, and people were talking, you had a real chance, I think, if you can approach the subject with an open mind to learn something. Let's say you were staunchly one way or the other way, and you really had the proper forum, and you could listen to one another, I think it is educated.
So, you, like, I'm sorry, you agree to, you see the function of this commission being more educational, more that versus getting involved in particular incidences, is that correct?
Well, I think, I think the incidences, the incidents will stimulate the discussion, and the, geez, this is, this, I heard this, this kind of something's going on, but...
But you don't hear, you don't expect it at all?
I don't see as a resolution, I don't see any authority, or as you say, the judicatory authority, to resolve an issue, except maybe to help us learn how to better interact with one another.
Like I said, there are, there are a whole bunch of, yeah, I mean, conflict resolution, I'm sure there are hundreds other ones that Tamara could name off the top of her head, you know, that sort of thing, of ways of educational. Again, I can see it from that perspective, I just don't want it to be coming, we had talked about something that is going to be slowing things down, that someone will talk to the rent commission, and say, "Oh, you need to talk to the police," and will their privacy, once that you talk to them, will their privacy be upheld? I just, I wanna make, my vision, or my, how I see it, is they should not be involved in particular incidences. They can react to an incident and say, "Okay, we need to have a seminar on this."
Or set up a forum, and be like, you know, "We need to discuss this."
But I would not like to see them getting involved in particular cases, because they have no ability to change things, nor should they. I don't want to see them bidding.
And they would also have to, if you, if you deform anything like this, this, well, you have to have the education background. You understand, especially since... To do this, you'd have to really be educated, or taken...
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Don't give me...
Absolutely. As within any board or group.
Informational.
Right, you'd wanna have the right person be coordinating the discussion, so that it could be a productive discussion.
Yeah, you know, social work or...
Conflict resolution, right? And I'm not sure a human rights commission is the right word for it. Given what we're talking about here, there may be a different way of characterizing the subject matter.
That's why, like, you know, that East Hampton Matters, I know Jackie's been doing her PhD and got a job, so she's been sort of, not been quite as active, but that was the, that was the concept of that group. You know, first, I know we had all big budget discussions. The idea was to educate the public about the budget, how the budget, where the money comes from, what money can be used, you know, and so, the whole idea was...
Collecting information.
Right, was to be a dispenser of information and education about everything. So, that scene would perfectly line in with them, although, again, I don't know how active they would wanna be, or are. But, I mean, everything, from what you said, I mean, there's almost, I mean, the sanctuary city thing is sort of on the whole idea, just educating people, what, what does that word even mean? And what are the expectations, pro, or con, or something?
Right, well, I mean, it also becomes a statement of like intent, you know, a statement of what we stand for. Um, you know, which is why I think that this has some validity to at least research. But, I mean, I think that what you say is, is a poignant thing, which is, there is a group that is, has similar goals to this. And, you know, many of the people that we would tap to be in a humans' right, right committee would be probably already involved in something. And with peoples, I mean, we can, we could create all the committees in the world. If we don't have the right people to fill them, or the people that are passionate about filling them, then it's just a name with, you know... So, you know, I, I, I would, you know, I don't, I'm not particularly driven to move this tonight in any particular way. I feel like I'd like to do a little bit...
I would think it would be holy fraud. First of all, we don't have, we don't have councils here, or Councilor Hayes.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I think it would make sense for us to kind of table this for now and...
And continue the discussion.
I was just gonna make a motion to get it going, you know? Okay, so, do you have any other thoughts on this? Well, I don't think we're gonna take this up on our eleventh, because our eleventh meeting is gonna be the sanctuary city meeting. I have a feeling that one's gonna be... Yeah, that's, that one's probably gonna be focused on that.
Should get upstairs, walk upstairs.
So, um, and I left my folder of ordinances around marijuana at home. So, unless you brought anything sponsoring?
Any particular, I just, you know, wanted to repeat that I know that the school committee had wanted to limit the number.
No, we can't do that. I would, that was, the only way to limit the number would be by ballot, I believe. I believe, I don't know.
No, there is a provision in the, in the initiative petition to limit no less than twenty percent of the number of licenses, liquor licenses, or beer and wine, or liquor, it's not quite clear. But the number of licenses, it would look like if there were ten, you could have two. If there were ten, ten licenses, you could have two. Just wanted to say that, put that out.
Yeah, sure.
I don't feel like it's appropriate right now to move anything forward on that.
Yeah, I heard there was actually, the feedback I got from...
But yes, it is, it is something, if you were to go lower than the number I just said, you would have to put, there's a process to put the, the, the subject matter on the ballot before the municipality can vote.
Right, and I, the feedback I got from people that I talked to felt like the school committee was out of line talking about this in the first place.
Yeah.
That they didn't really have the purview, and that they wasted a lot of their time on this. So, I think this is the right place for that discussion, so I think was...
They were making a recommendation to the city council.
Right. Well, that was just, I didn't see it. I will watch it. I didn't see it, but that was just what I heard.
They didn't vote to do any, they voted to write it to us, and I haven't seen that one.
That's what I heard, so...
So, Sammy, I know you had said that you had done some cursory research. Is there anything that stuck, that one or two that stuck to your mind, some other communities have done that, that's intriguing?
Yeah, um, well, one of the things that's kind of interesting is the, the, what Colorado has done around having places where, like, similar to Cafe in Amsterdam, where people can go to that place and have access to whatever, and have coffee. There's no alcohol served, but it's a, it's a place where people, it's not a bar. It's, it's kind of, but the caveat in law is you can't, it's no public places, so it would have to be private, so it would almost be like a membership place. So, that's one of the things that, no, but I haven't heard anybody talk about.
Are you talking about consumption?
Yep.
In addition to sales?
It would be sales for consumption at the premises.
I hadn't envisioned that, that would be the ballot question.
Yeah, it's, it's not...
Is it, was it specifically mentioned in there?
It was not, it was, it was not specifically mentioned in the ballot question. It just said, "No public places." So, I thought that was kind of interesting.
Yes.
Um, because that's how Colorado, I mean, the latest report I saw, they actually, I can't remember exactly what the number was, but the amount of revenue that they've generated is far greater than they ever expected, by leaps and bounds. So, and I mean, if you, if, it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's an interesting thought, because, you know, it's like, it's funny how people pause when you say that, but do you pause when you say, "I'm going to the bar, and I'm gonna drink potentially many drinks of vodka?" You know, I mean, so, you know, it's like, it's an interesting, because this is a law, I think, is called to tax and regulate marijuana, like alcohol or something like that, you know, similar setup. So, alcohol can be imbibed in places. So, I think that's gonna be an interesting discussion for us to have.
It's really funny socially.
It's, yeah, it's just...
When you step back and think of it as this drug.
Yeah.
You're encouraged to socialize and drink, you're encouraged to go places, it's a social thing to hang out. You know, it's just funny how we're...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a shift, a perception shift for a lot of people. But, in a lot of places, they've made that shift, and it seems to be working out all right.
And it's tomorrow, isn't it? Is it tomorrow?
Uh, it is tomorrow.
Wow.
Yep. No, they, none of the places can go until 2018.
States have no, no date with that.
So, they'll, so...
They're gonna cut up for the...
Yeah.
Will nothing change tomorrow?
Uh, no, you could...
Yeah, you can, you can grow marijuana.
You can have, you can have an ounce of marijuana.
And you can, and you can have some on you.
Okay.
But you're still public, but you can't, you can't open or sell it.
Right. You can give it away. Pretty sure you can give it away, starting tomorrow.
And, um, just as soon as, um...
I think it's six to twelve, or something like that. Maybe it's six.
If there's two people in a house, yeah.
But...
That's right, where you can, you know, get a license.
You have to get a license to grow at home?
Just, no, not to grow.
Oh, to sell, yeah. Grow at home, I didn't think you needed a license, right?
Yeah, certainly.
Some number of plants, right?
Yeah, so one of the interesting, one of the interesting things that I also, I also did find, you know, basically what the regulations were, was, you know, about the appearance of the store, the advertising, security, very similar things to what we dealt with with medical marijuana. It wasn't quite as restrictive as, you know, as far as like being able to see into, that was just in Colorado. So, I mean, if we, if we wanted to make it so restrictive that you couldn't see into the building, you know, like windows, if you had a storefront, and then other things, you know, I think, um, other things were similar to hours of operation. I, there was, I saw some that had like minimum distances to schools, um, but, you know, um, and, and limiting to certain zones or areas of, so those are the issues, for the most part.
I don't know if he's out here, but there was a member of that Hampshire Care Facility team who was from, who ran organization, who ran...
Oh, the Colorado one.
I mean, I don't know if he's around, he may be out there, but it would be interesting if his schedule allows to have him come and speak to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do, um, do, do we know, what's their status? Do we know?
Actually, I'm here for no date.
Oh.
So, I'd be happy to ask if you want to come to one of your...
Who's this?
Or some community.
That'd be really good, yeah.
Who, who's this?
Of the, the board of the Hampshire, Hampshire Care?
Hamden, Hamden Care Facility.
Oh, Hamden.
Yeah.
And what is that for license? Please, Hamden.
I forgot his name, but there was a gentleman who...
Yes.
He was on the board.
Who had the experience of running, living in Colorado, and, and know all the ins and outs of what it was like, and what has worked, and what hasn't worked.
And he was at a training, and he was at the walk, do you remember?
Yeah, yeah, and he was, I remember he was at that, because they did come in front of the council, didn't they? Because I think that whole group was there.
Yeah, did they?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was a couple of people from Connecticut and...
Right, this guy was from Colorado.
He was like...
I'm sure they, I'm sure he could handle it.
Yeah, and I think he was also doing stuff in Washington State as well. I think he mentioned that, but, so anyway, we don't have anything...
Just to back up one quick second to the numbers, I know you said that Colorado made a lot of money, far more money, and they may be making far more money on this state of Colorado.
Yeah, then...
But, I have to also recognize that the writers of the petition limited the state's and the city's income to ten percent, the tax, on marijuana. And then, ten percent plus two percent if the city went ahead and did their thing, that would be twelve percent, I believe. So, it was the initial state tax, six and a quarter, then three point seven five, and then two percent, as opposed to, I think Colorado's at thirty-five percent. And I think Washington is at fifty percent, if I'm not mistaken. So, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done as to how that'll get some new view. And then the flip side is...
Because the state's discussing that now.
They are discussing that.
The more tax you have, does it create more...
It creates a black market.
More poverty for a black market.
Because if you can grow it, and then you tax it too much, then you... Uh, Colorado topped one billion in legal marijuana sales in 2016. One billion.
Sales.
Sales.
Not tax rate, sales, so, that's still a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
You're taxing thirty-five percent.
It reported, um, one point one billion in sales. And so, the number, and last year was nine hundred ninety-six million. Yeah, well, it triggered, last year it triggered, they got so much tax revenue that it triggered a state law that required them to give the money back to the citizens.
Yeah, I saw it on television.
And, um, and the people said, they didn't want it. They said, "Use it, they said, "Use it for the schools and, use it for schools and roads."
That's fascinating.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would have been, see, that would have been a smart idea if the state had said, "Yeah, here's what we're gonna, here's how we're gonna tax it, and this tax is gonna go directly to education and directly to healthcare." That would have been smart, because it's just gonna go to the general fund and get...
Yeah.
That's what people always are afraid of.
Yeah, right.
Did you, the state say that, that, "Don't make money on this, it's gonna cost that money"?
No, I didn't do that. I don't believe that for a minute.
It was the, that's the pressure.
Really? Oh, that's interesting. Well, we'll see, I guess, we're gonna see what happens. So, but I think maybe at our, our second meeting in January, we can have more concrete stuff. It gives us a little time to, to do some research. And if there is, I don't, you know, I didn't see anything in the law that would prohibit a private club from setting up, and, you know, for like a cafe kind of place. So, that'll be interesting, because I haven't heard anybody say anything about that. I haven't heard one person say anything about that.
You know what might be another good resource, is because Barb is always like surfing her city clerk's app, see if she can put out there, has anyone, does anyone have any...
Actually, who else does that to us, Jack?
Oh, for the attorneys.
The lawyers.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, all right, any other items for us, JP? All right. Second on favor.
That's us.
All right, good job.